Good evening, we're calling the Monday, July 15th, 2024 Extracurricular Meeting to Order. It is now 5:31, we'll call the meeting to order. Obviously, myself, Mr. Wibbling, Madam Superintendent, Mr. Assistant Superintendent is here, as well as Mr. Kearns and Ms. Hecker. I guess on the agenda tonight, the one item that we have is just kind of an update of what we have and what we're going into the new fall season. Mr. Kearns, you have the floor, sir.
Thanks, sure. You know, we've had a lot of camps and activities for kids of all ages this summer. Even this week, we've got volleyball and girls' basketball camp here at the high school, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays. Youth football camp is Wednesday evening at stadium. So we're still running through summer activities. And from a high school standpoint, with all of our sports, they've done a number of things this summer in terms of camps, shootouts for basketball, there's been wrestling workouts, soccer workouts, open fields, and all of the things that keep kids busy in the summer. Again, at a number of age groups and levels. So we are July 15th today, so we are essentially two weeks from the start of golf season officially. That'll be July 29th, and then all the other sports start officially on August 1st in terms of mandatory practice. And obviously, you know, we're about two-thirds of the way through summer here, and it'll be here before you know it.
When we say 8-1 would be football and everything else?
Yeah, everything, the only sport with an exception this year ahead of August 1st is golf, just by the nature of the calendar. Golf doesn't really require, what do you want to call it, any kind of an acclimation period. Kids have been golfing tournaments all summer individually, so they hop right in and they'll, you know, they'll be playing matches the first week, so.
Anything from the middle school?
You know, the first thing I would say is the gym looks wonderful, so it's been over there, it's finished, it's concealed, and it looks very nice. So I know we switched the volleyball poles around, so now we can play like two courts lengthwise versus widthwise, which was a nice change, which we can do a few more things in there. So the floor is looking great, those kind of things. Our high school coaches have welcomed our middle school kids as well. This year is probably the first time that's happened, I think, in a long time, is that the middle school kids are now lifting and going up with some of the high school coaches and doing workouts with them, so that's been a nice addition at the middle school level, too. So just running out coaches, you know, we kind of struggled right at the end, I had one resigned, you know, somebody couldn't do it today, just with family issues and those kind of things, and I had two this past week. So it's just kind of like scrambling to get those final pieces in place and the certification's done, and then, other than that, things are, schedules are pretty complete. Soccer's always kind of a little flexible, just with a lot of middle school people don't have soccer teams, so I'm always kind of working on those at the last minute with. The stadium schedule's pretty full, almost like every night, I want to say, between soccer, high school, middle school, football, all that stuff, so.
At any level, any new opponents that we should know about, or any from the past?
New opponents? Football, the change in the schedule this year is we no longer will play Newark, we'll play Lima instead, which goes back to, we played them some in a non-conference way. We were also in the Greater Buckeye Conference with them for, I believe, eight years, from 2003, 2011, so that's sort of a, brings back a little bit of an old rivalry. So we'll be at Lima this year, and then Lima will come here next fall, and then we'll see if we keep that one going, or look for some other options. We're still playing Mount Vernon, which we, I think, gosh, I think honestly, we've played Mount Vernon week one every week since I've been employed here.
For a long time.
It feels like. And then we're Ashland again with week two for the Erieville, with the non-conference. Then we get into the conference schedule, week four. So that, from a football standpoint, that's the only change. And then other sports, I know of note, you know, volleyball, we did pick up, we have a home match with Delaware Hays, first time we've played Hays in quite a while. Soccer schedules, nothing overly significant that I can think as far as change goes. We do have some teams locally that are starting to pick up some programs. North Union's doing some JV stuff, Boys and Girls, Sky's of Girls are doing varsity now, so we're starting to get some more teams that are nearby.
Gotcha.
So that's helpful, obviously, for travel.
No doubt.
Is there any, I guess expenditures the board should expect coming for the new season? Obviously, football, sometimes expensive. Anything that you can think off the top of your head?
I mean, just some things Jake and I have talked about, I mean, that, over at the stadium, which it looks fantastic over there, if anybody's been over and seen Section B, you know, they fixed that this summer. That's always been the problematic section in terms of the quality of contract, of concrete. We repainted the track last spring, and we have the, I don't know if you're familiar, but we have the red tarps that kind of protect the track during football season from the cleats and just all the bodies that are, you know, down there during a football mat, a football game. Those are, they've, they pretty much run their course. We bought those when we put the new track in, I think we're on, what, we're nine or 10 years now. So we're working on getting some quotes from Vic at Pioneer Sports and see what we can do with that. But they're not, they're not cheap, you know, they have to be durable and they have to be...
Thick, right?
Thick to protect the track, because, you know, that track has held up well, and we want it to continue to hold up well, because those, you know, $10,000 or $15,000 in tarps is better than a half a million for a track.
We're talking the area that the players cross to get to the locker room, that's what you're talking about?
Yeah, the areas where they come and go from their respective locker rooms, and then also, we protect the area behind each bench, because we're pretty tight over there. There's not a lot of sideline turf room, so the players tend to spill over onto the track with their benches and whatnot, so we like to protect like those first three or four lanes.
Not to get in the weeds about that, but in terms of the tarps, and when I was coaching, it was always a thing, in terms of keeping them down, and I know we use the old weight plates, are there any, is there something we can look at that anchors into the tarps?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, no, so what they, what they do now, and it'd probably be a little more expensive, what they do now is the edges of the tarps have, I don't know what's inside there, but some kind of a weighted strip.
Is it weighted?
So that there, the tarps have some weight to themselves.
Heavy enough to secure it?
So we won't have to use those old rusty...
Gotcha, I was always worried about that, safety issues.
Because they're trip hazard and they're unsightly among other things.
Falling on, yes, okay, that's good.
Yeah, so we, yeah, those are, you can get those with, they're kind of like, you know, if you've been up and seen the baseball tarps, to cover the mound and the home plate area, they have the weighted edges.
Gotcha.
So it'd be something similar to that.
Good.
Ms. Rollins, anything from music? I see you sitting out in the crowd.
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so marching band, Rookie Week is getting ready to start in the next couple So, sorry, I didn't even realize. So Rookie Camp for the High School, Marching Band is getting ready to start. The band is also doing right now Middle School Band Camp for those kids that are coming into the program. Huge thank you to the grant that Marsha Pitts was able to receive for summer camps and programs. That's been able to fund all of those essential elements, books that all of those kids will use throughout as curriculum in middle school, so Jacob and Ben are very excited about that. We have show choir rehearsals that started last week, so we've got two shows getting ready, you know, being put together. So right now, we're just doing vocal rehearsals, and in August, that will switch to choreography. And yeah, so the music department is up and running and no turning back, so.
Awesome.
And musical will also be announced. The high school musical will be announced this upcoming week. Have been able to secure the contract for the show, I think it's going to be great, it'll be a wonderful show for the entire district. All the kids and families, I think, will really enjoy it, so looking forward to kind of bringing that to fruition, and that'll start auditions the day after Labor Day in September.
So we don't know yet, you haven't announced what it is?
Uh, no, there are some legalities when it comes to copyrights, and I'm gonna...
We're not going to let you do that.
I am not going to.
And when is that reveal, I guess?
So the performance, is that what you're asking?
No, the reveal and then, yeah.
Yes, next week I will reveal what the musical is for all of the high school kids, and I know that I've had a lot of elementary and middle school kids in that, as well as youth course, so, yeah, it's coming up, and then that performance will be second week of November.
Okay, thank you. Anything else you got? Madam Superintendent, anything you have?
Um, no, I don't have any.
Mr. Hayner?
No, sir.
Okay. I don't think we have anything else, though.
I think one camp, isn't there a cheerleading camp this week, too?
Yeah.
It's in the evening.
It is, yeah.
I know you said volleyball, basketball, and then there's cheerleading.
Volleyball, girls' basketball, cheerleading out here in the evenings, and then football Wednesday at the stadium, yeah.
Because I just know we had to reroute, so they drop off over there because they're working payment.
Because of the parking lot, yeah.
Yeah.
We will, with that, we will adjourn the Extracurricular Committee meeting.
Yep. About 20. At 6 o'clock, I'd like to call to order the Policy and Personnel Committee meeting tonight. Again, President Ratliff and I are here, there's the roll call. Major topic of discussion tonight, Board of Education Draft Policy 5136 concerning personal communication devices. And Madam Superintendent, if you wouldn't mind kicking this off with what you presented to us, too.
Okay, thank you, Board Vice President, Mr. Wibbling. So I just want to give a little bit of background about what we've been doing to bring everybody up to speed on the cell phone policy. So we actually had three different policies. We had the original policy that you had shared, you were head of the ballgame with getting something in order. We also had one that the state of Ohio provided, and they provided that policy for any districts that didn't have a policy in place and needed to get something in place in order to keep up with the recent legislation, such as there are some, there are some school districts that aren't, that don't use Neola, or they don't use OSBA to do their policies. So for those districts that needed something quick to get a policy in place, the state provided that option. The third one was the recommendation that we got from Neola, which is aligned with the policy that we already have in place. So what I'd like to do is just kind of talk through this draft and what you have in front of you, and, you know, obviously, it's going to be up for discussion, it's on for the first read, so if there are board members that have, you know, something that they want to consider before the second read, I mean, technically, there's still really two more meetings, you could probably push it. I know for admin, they would like to have something in place by the beginning of the year, so that we can, so that they can start to enforce it and talk to teachers as they come back. I'll also say, we did bring those yonder pouches today, so to show you all, if you want to take a look at them.
Absolutely.
Kevin's gonna do the tutorial. So...
Gladly.
I'll just say this again, for summer school, the teachers really set the expectation before we got the pouches.
Slam it on the camera? Slam it on the camera? All right. And it releases, okay.
Like it.
All right, first...
So these bigger ones would be more like, if you have the kids coming through the front door?
That was my next question.
That's a more sturdy one, they can just, it's quicker. That handheld one is one like an administrator could walk around with, or a teacher could have a handheld one.
All right, so walk me through logistics in terms of, at the end of the day, so at the beginning of the day, the end of the day, what do we, what would we be seeing as you watch students walk into the building then, if we were to have one of these for each student?
Well, just for the yonder pouches, remember, we only ordered 150, so that's going to be part of my discussion at the board meeting to say, you know, many districts are purchasing additional pouches, so that every student has one, so you'll have to consider getting one for every student, and also getting additional of the, I don't know what they're called, unlock, yeah, the unlocking devices, because that's something that came up at summer school, and the teachers were like, we don't have enough of the unlocking devices.
You'd have to have one in every classroom.
Yeah, yeah, so that's something...
Or general areas that you...
Well...
Yeah, I mean, you could add them down the hole.
And that was one of the things in terms of, again, God forbid, if there's a school-wide emergency, you don't have access to the hallways, you want to make sure that each classroom did have access to one of these, so they're not happy to go to one.
What I would say, on a not happy note, but I would say to you that, let's say you forget, there's nothing in this that you can't cut it, or something to that effect, so.
Okay, definitely be.
Just FYI, and they can go home, and those aren't available at the end of the day, how many of our kids are going to just walk out of the building? In turn, we're going to waste a lot of money on those, getting them, that they're going to go and then just cut them.
Well, a lot of districts are adding to their policy, such as we have our Chromebook policy, right? If you damage the Chromebook policy, you're in charge for replacement, or you just don't have that privilege. And I did see one other district, I believe it was in the Cleveland area, where they are, they have a policy where if they damage the pouches, they assign the pouches, and if they're damaged, the student or family is responsible. What I have seen, because yonder pouches are actually being used across the nation, wish I would have discovered them, because whoever did is going to make a lot of money. But they have, kind of like when the kids come through, if they have metal detectors, they have them stationed, I've seen tables on both sides where you have admin, or some people have security workers, and they just have the pouches there, and they're handing the pouches, that's one option, and then when they leave, there's a bunch of people there with exit things. The other option is, you have, if the teachers have them, but depending on how many students they have in a classroom, that could be problematic, or you're going to have to figure out dismissal about, you know, timing, if you're going to have to build in time to unlock the pouches. The other option that we had discussed with admin was, you know, maybe giving them the option at the beginning of the year, and then once you violate it, you have to use the pouch, so that would help them, I guess, implement it in an incremental way for those kids that need it especially, and those kids that are following the policy, and you're keeping your phone out of sight, and you're following what the teachers have told you to do.
Yeah, so you don't need this unless...
Right.
Which cuts down on the overall cost and everything else.
Right, and I know for summer school, the teachers have actually talked ahead of time about what was going to happen, and they were all on the same page, so it's like, the first time, if a kid has their phone out, we, they get a warning. The second time, it was like, now we're ready to, you know, take the phone. So again, this is just the policy, how it's going to play out and be enforced is really going to be the administrative guideline piece, and it could look very different. Even today at DLMC, we talked about, there might be differences about what this looks like at the high, high school, middle school, and an elementary school, because at an elementary school, you might say, hey, Kevin, hand me your phone, you're not supposed to have your phone out, and they're going to hand it to you. However, high school kid is bigger than you, I don't know that she want to have the tug-of-war battle, and is that just, you know, after you get to the second time, it's a referral like anything else, and then the administration logs it and takes care of it.
So, and this was piloted only at Harding this summer, correct? In terms of getting their feedback from the teachers that experienced it, my next question is, is it best to have them come talk to, the next time we have, after the full board gets to discuss this tonight for the first time together? Do we bring those teachers to the next policy meeting, or is that something that happens? Is it building to build, just to give the recommendations, here's what we saw, here's what we recommend, here's other roadblocks that we thought of after the fact, just to get that experience shared with the rest of the staff, and the administration especially? So I'll know if we think that happens best at a committee meeting, if that happens at the administrative level, they're the ones who experienced it, so we should definitely be tapping into what they went through.
Yeah, I know we have it on the agenda for the principals, or Kevin has it on the agenda for the principals when they come back.
Okay.
My recommendation would be, you guys decide what you're okay with policy, and then, because again, it might look a little different at the high school versus middle school and elementary school.
Okay, but do we have plans to have those teachers from summer school come in to discuss with, that would be my recommended, they're the ones who lived it, they went through, we had this, and I'd like that they all got together and said, okay, here's what we're going to do, and try to remake that whole firm, fair, and consistent argument when it comes to classroom management and any type of adherence to policy, so.
All right, if, I want to just talk through the policy, so that you understand our thinking as bringing this first draft to you. At the very beginning, you'll see the telephone paging devices, beepers, pagers, we figured that was obsolete, so the note, it was an option, anytime you see those parentheses, those are like options for Neola. And then in the next section, we had options A, B, C, or D. You can still look at options A, C, and D, but we thought B gave us the most leeway, I would, I would say. Now, we did say that they can use their devices during these times with, you know, with approval of the teacher or administrator at another time, they can use those. Now, option, the other options are either less restrictive or more restrictive, because I think option B says you can't even bring them on campus, and we didn't really think that that was going to be feasible. Now, if the board decides that, you know, one of these things, you don't want them to be able to use them during lunch break, or in between classes, or, you know, during school activities, we can certainly uncheck those, but we were having discussion about, there's so many different scenarios when you add in, you know, talk about extracurricular after school, and maybe sometimes it is appropriate for them to use the phones, and even for some of the students that take these long trips, I mean, do we really want to say, and there's later in the policy, it says, actually, it's the next section, I believe, that, in the next green section, talks about on-school vehicles, like, we didn't want to say they couldn't use them, because some kids, you know, when they take field trips, they're on the bus for a long time. So again, as long as you're using it, and it's not just causing a distraction, with the approval of the bus driver, or here, they gave us the option to add classroom teachers, like if they're on a field trip, or the sponsor, advisor, or coach. Or maybe the coach decides that they don't want them on the phones for whatever reason, they would have that authority to do so while they were on the bus. The next section that's highlighted in green says that, except as authorized by teacher, administrator, or IUP team, students cannot like capture, record sounds, audio sounds because of violation of privacy, and then it also says in this section that if a student is caught violating the privacy rights, that the phone can be confiscated. We also chose two options, either it could be held till the end of the school day, or if, oh, no, there's three options, I forgot, law enforcement, or a parent guardian could pick it up, or it could be handed over to law enforcement. And when we talked through this, we thought all of those were important, because each situation is different, so again, any of those X's could be removed. The next green section is referring to another thing about privacy, and it talks about, you can't use personal communication devices with cameras in areas such as classrooms, gymnasiums, locker rooms, shower facilities, bathrooms, or any other area where students may be changing or disrobing of clothes. Again, there's a few options there, some are more restrictive, some are less. We thought that option three explained it, because there might be other areas, where we have students who are in choir or in a performance, and they might be changing in a classroom and not in a shower or a locker room, so that covers all of those areas. We also thought important to keep in this next option, which is at the top of page three in green.
One second, on option three there, that is basically, we're saying it's prohibited, and you went further than option two, which was just like changing areas.
Right, it says...
So we have the most restrict, at least as to changing and so forth, like bathrooms, locker rooms.
Yeah.
Anywhere a student may be changing, we went with the most restrictive option on that one.
Right.
Is that what I'm understanding, okay.
Just because we felt with all of the extracurricular activities, they're in all kinds of spaces.
Correct, I'm just, I'm just making sure we're on the, that's the most, we went with the most restrictive when it comes to changing areas.
Right.
Because it could be classrooms or whatever, okay.
Could go beyond that.
Yep, thank you.
But we could pick, like you said, you know, we could select any of those or take any away if, if that's...
I think what it is, is that you, you had more, you used classrooms and other, that maybe option two didn't have, and option one didn't have, I guess option two didn't have.
The next section is basically saying that students cannot place recording devices, I mean, they're not allowed to do that anyway, but it just says that if they want permission to do so, they have to get that either from the principal or the assistant superintendent, and then the request has to be answered within five days. If they say they want to record something, they just can't do it, they can't do it privately. About midway page, midway down page three, this was another option, this is basically saying the possession of a personal communication device at school during school hours and during extracurriculars is a privilege, it could be forfeited at any time. We felt strongly about putting this in, because we've had many, many issues with things that have occurred after school with the cell phones, as far as like some of the social media posts that have been done, some text messages that have gone back and forth, and so we thought it was important to include that, to let kids know, like, you're not off the hook just because school is out, like, we still have an expectation of how you're using your personal communication device, even at extracurricular activities. The next...
That should probably also list all those other ones that you have listed prior, which would be, because this just says school activities and extracurricular activities, they didn't go through school activities, bus riding, you know what I mean? All the things that you listed previously, I think it was back at the beginning of where they may be able to use their phone. I think we should, you know, obviously, you're saying it's a privilege and we can take it, so if you're using it on the bus, it's inappropriate, I think it should be rehashed there, too.
Whichever ones we pick.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's just saying, school activ, it's saying during school hours and extracurriculars, but some of them will say that ain't an extracurriculars.
Whatever list we choose at the beginning should be reiterated there, got it.
It should just be redone, but I get her point, that we're taking it and it's a privilege.
The next highlighted green area is basically adding to the policy, and again, maybe you guys think differently, but this, we wanted to at least get a draft out. Any student who actually discovers that somebody is, you know, using a recording device or doing two-way technology is supposed to report it to the principal, if they're aware of it.
A student, that was my question, we've got a person. I was wondering if we wanted to put staff member, did we, are we...
I was thinking it included both, but maybe we need to make that clear.
Well, I mean, I guess if something were to happen in a restroom and another student sees it, you know, that's when a teacher wouldn't necessarily be there.
What about, what she's saying is, she used the word person to include everybody.
Yeah, that's where I was thinking, staff member, but now it comes to mind, well, there are situations in which that might be necessary, so.
Yeah, and I actually think more students would know about this before staff.
Yes, okay, all right. Well, we also have that is required to report the violation. So if you have a group of kids, you got 12 kids who see somebody doing something on the phone that they, A, shouldn't have out, and B, they're doing something they shouldn't be, none of those 12 kids report it, then we need to follow up with that policy, that, okay, if you're required and you didn't say anything, you are, you're not guilty of what that person did, but you are guilty of non-reporting, okay?
And that would come in when you're, you know, rolling out what the expectations are for the policy, and I'll tell you, I know, at least this year, for the most part, at least I could say at Harding, not so much, granted, we still have some work to do there, because I think the middle school brain is just still not as developed, but at the beginning of the year, we had recording of fights, and we had to sit down and talk and say, like, as far as we're concerned, if you record a fight, you might as well have been in the fight, because those recordings actually sometimes cause us more problems down the road, because here, you're now posting it on Facebook, posting it on Snapchat, and there's more issues that come along with that. So they had, I mean, they got the memo pretty much here, like, don't participate, if you participate, because you're recording it, and then you're going to go post it somewhere, I mean, we, I almost feel like that perpetuates the issue for us. I know there's been some situations where we've had expulsions dealing with a fight, but then we've also had to deal with the recording of the fights and then the dissemination of those fights. So I think to be clear about it from the beginning, to say, like, you are... So I think to be clear about it from the beginning, to say like, you are required. And then if the situation happens and there's an investigation and you're found out not to be, the policy protects us in issuing discipline as administrators.
I just, I'm fine with everything you just said. I think instead of a person, I think we should have it defined faculty or staff, however you want to say it, and student. Because sometimes we have students reading policies that might not understand person also includes them. I think if we have it faculty and students, or how, staff and students, or whatever, so that they're included. I know a person is supposed to include everybody, but they might not take it that way. I want them to be able to read, because then the next paragraph, we say students are personally, you know, so I think they need to see themselves in that paragraph that you just described. So if they're reading it, they'll know immediately that they have to either report or they could be in trouble as well.
I don't want to create a culture that divides the student body and they're, you know, I saw you do this and I saw you do that. But if there's an investigation going on and you were brought in and questioned, you should have to, A, tell the truth, obviously, yes, I saw so-and-so using it. I get my initial reaction with a student taking the initiative to, even if it's their best friend, I think that puts a kid in a, in a tough spot. And I don't want this to be more divisive than it might already be at the beginning, if that makes sense. Again, investigation, you were called, you know, in front of the administration and you're asking a question. No, you have to answer truthfully. It's the whole initiating the reporting that I have trouble with at the beginning. But it's something we can talk about as we go.
Yeah, but I mean, any, any major profession, let's say, you know, attorneys are governed by the bar. They have to self-report attorneys that are doing wrong. You know, the military will make you self-report, or any high-level academic thing that you go to, you have to report if you see someone cheating on the SAT or the ACT here to report. I mean, pretty much anything with academic integrity has the person reporting if they're cheating or so forth. I don't see it being much different.
Then that should be part of the.
I mean, that sees it much different.
Well, we need to tell the kids why then, like, this is why.
Correct, but I mean, you might have to correct some other, if we're going to have this in the personal, what, this is the personal communication devices, we probably should have it a lot of other places as well. Then we need to look at.
An honor code type.
An honor code type, yes, exactly. Because it just wouldn't be to this, it'd be to other, other stuff. If we're going to, if we're going to live by a certain code, we just don't do it to communication devices. We do it every day, life here.
We got to explain the reasoning behind that, here's the why.
And administrators could be able to do that, but you got to give them the teeth. We would have to give them the policy, the teeth to be able to do it. Because we do it one thing, but not the other, but we're expecting them to live to some honor code, I guess.
And any administrator who's doing their investigation the appropriate way is not going to penalize a kid once they get all of the information. And I'll give you one example, and this is, you know, before Marion, working with principals. The rule was if we get into a fight, everyone's suspended. But I said, you can't just do that because some kids are walking down the hallway and they get assaulted. They get hit in the back of the head, or kids jump them. So are you going to suspend the kid who got attacked because they were defending themselves? So you can't just say, oh, there was a fight, everybody gets suspended. You have to dig down and you have to interview kids and you have to try to get down to the root of it. And we have a process in place, which a lot of our parents exercise. If they're not happy with what happens at the building, they contact the assistant superintendent. Kevin has done several parent meetings. I did them as assistant superintendent. They can appeal suspensions, and we have those conversations when we need it. Lots of times we don't end up at appeal because, you know, there's high emotions sometimes at the buildings and we kind of talk them through and share what the policies are. So a lot of times we come to agreement with the parent and they better understand what happened in the process, so it doesn't even go to a formal appeal. But we do have that process in place. And the principals know that, they tell parents, and they try to work through it. But once they get to a certain point, they'll say, you can always call the assistant superintendent or the superintendent if you want to talk to someone above me. And we've been able to work through those. The last two are optional, but we thought just for clarity, because there is going to be, you know, some parents are going to say, I need to get in touch with my kid. I need to tell my kid how to get home from school. I need to communicate with them during the day. So we say like, in a dire, dire emergency, or, you know, kids can, you know, come down if they need to call their parent. Let's say they don't have access to their phone, they could have access to the office phones, as well as parents could call the school. Now, if it's something, you know, that they can check their phone at the end of the day to know how they're getting home, you know, that's a different thing. But just as we've talked about the addiction and the falling of the reliance on phones with our kids, our parents are also highly.
Dependent.
Dependent on the phones. So again, it's, it's going to be a culture shift. I think, I actually sat with the other Marion County Supes and representative Tracy Richardson, and Kevin was there too. And we just talked about, it's just going to be a shift. However, we don't really have an option now as a school district, right? It's part of the law. So on behalf of the legislators, they actually are helping us with this because they understand the importance of it. And we now, if a parent says, well, I want my kid to do this, 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 we're like, we have to work within these parameters because it's now a requirement by state law. So we have a little bit of way there. I honestly, I think at the beginning, it may be, you know, a change for people to get used to. But I think once they realize that you can still function without it all the time, that it'll be.
I think we'll function better without them, to be honest. For the, we, not much time left, and I know the full board will discuss this. A, thank you for putting this together and everybody involved with presenting this and showing us our options and what the state has presented. A couple of things before we get to the official first reading. I noticed that headphones and earbuds, earbuds, whatever you want to call them, aren't a part of this. I know that's a big problem in classrooms. I think we as a board need to focus on how do we feel about kids on, like you said, the extracurricular trips, the field trips, on the buses. What do after-school activities, what does that entail? And then just obviously the situations in which they might be permitted or not. So we still have quite a bit to discuss as a board. You were going to say something?
Yeah, mine was the iPads or listening devices, sometimes that's.
Yes.
I don't know, it needs to be included in here or have a separate policy. I think it should just be in here somewhere, but as maybe a section, but headphones, whatever you want to call it. So. Yeah, I mean, I was on the same wavelength with you that's not mentioned, so. Either it needs to be separate or part of this. I think the easiest is just be a part of here somewhere, a paragraph.
Okay, so I got, re-circle back on earbuds, headphones. Be a little bit more clear on what it looks like on extracurricular trips or after-school activities. What are students permitted to use and not, and?
You know, and I think the way this reads, if that's, if we're going to be okay, you know, after school or so, it should say with permission of coach or teacher or whoever, the advisor of that, or whatever we say. Because it says they can use them before and after school, during lunch, between classes, disruption. But, you know, if you're a coach trying to teach something, you're like, hey, get off your phone. You should have the authority to be saying, hey, put that stuff away, you know? Because that's the whole purpose of us putting this stuff away. It's like, now time to, to pay attention or whatever. And then trying to give them, trying to find some middle ground that during breaks you can have it, you know, or use it, I guess. So I think that after-school stuff, because we do have that with, I think in here, it's properly laid out with a bus driver being able to do it, you know? But I don't think the after-school really says that. But it does say may, so I mean, I just want, again, if the students are reading this, to be pretty clear about what we're meaning.
Okay, and for the sake of time, we're approaching, if we're not already at 6:30. Motion to adjourn this.
Yeah, second one too.
There you go, thank you. Who is it Kathy? Who?
Margie Holiday.
She's my math, Taft.
Really?
She taught at Taft.
Taft, yeah. She loud.
She what?
She get after you, boy.
What's she?
Oh, yeah, she dessert. Her husband was like firefighter.
Yes, he's fire chief.
Fire chief, yeah. Yeah? Well, she get after you, loud. I can't tell where the feedback's coming from. Are you hearing that on the speakers?
Hello? I have to use one of these that we're breaking every time, like every Sunday.
Good morning, Julie.
Good morning. Oh dear. I hope it's a little farther than that.
You got the rest of the day, you get all your stuff done.
Yeah.
See?
Oh boy. You ready, Miss Dyer? It's now 6:34. We're going to call the Monday, July 15th, 2024 Regular Board of Education meeting to order. We will be standing for a pledge of allegiance here shortly. However, the floor is going to be given to Ms. Swongar. We had an unfortunate passing of one of our former staff members, Ms. Swongar.
Thank you. It is my honor to recognize Margie Holiday. Margie Holiday was a teacher at Taft Middle School, taught math most of the time. According to her obituary, Margie was a devoted teacher inspiring countless students with her enthusiasm, patience, and wisdom. She believed in the power of education to transform lives and was committed to fostering a love of learning in everyone she taught. Her classroom was not just a place of education, but a haven of encouragement and growth. She was also a sorority sister with Phi Delta Kappa, America's Sorority for Women in the Field of Education. Margie continued to make time to contact with her sorority members even after she retired and met with them at least every six months. She loved to travel. She was an avid golfer, loved the Ohio State Buckeyes. Was a Detroit Lions fan, but we won't hold that against her. And also enjoyed the University of Toledo. She was a Christmas fanatic and had an extensive collection of decorations for Christmas. So I would just like to honor Margie Holiday.
Do we know how many years she was here?
She taught for 32 years. I'm not sure how much of that was in Marion. She taught in Toledo before she came here, but her husband was the fire chief. And so when her husband became the fire chief, she moved to Marion and started teaching at Taft. But I believe her entire career was at Taft Middle School.
So we will say the pledge and stand in silence 32 seconds for her teaching career. So if you can join me.
I don't know where our flag is.
We used to have a flag over here, so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Secretary, or Madam Treasurer, can you call over?
Mrs. Dyer. Mr. Guyer.
Here.
Mr. Ratliff.
Here.
Ms. Swongar.
Present.
Mr. Wibbling.
Here.
Item 3A is a district update, superintendent's report. Madam Superintendent.
To President Ratliff and to the Marion City School Board members, good evening. I just have a few updates that I wanted to share publicly about happenings in the district. Number one, I just wanted to say publicly, as you all know, but there are some new Title IX regulations and currently they're on hold. So we will be prepared to do what training we need to, to update policies as soon as we have guidance from legal on how to proceed on that. And so we're still a little bit in limbo there, so we will continue to operate on old standards until we move over to new. But there is requirement with the new regulations that all staff are trained on those new regs. We also are going to have to be, you know, sharing information with parents, updating our policies. So later on in the agenda, I'll speak to this with the updates to the student handbook. We now are going to have to keep updating that. So our team is going to have like version one, the data was updated because we also have the cell phone policy. So as these things are changing, it will be important to just make sure we're looking at the most up-to-date. Also, there has been some work at the Grant Stadium, the bleachers. You guys have seen pictures of that work. I know we've talked about that for quite some time, so that's underway. We also have the Grant gym floor is completed. If you haven't seen it, it's very nice. We are done with our elementary summer school and our middle and high school summer school. Those have been completed. I know at the elementary level, we had over 200 students. And I know that Jen Wellman is preparing and their teaching learning team is preparing like an end-of-summer report once all of the. Okay.
Are we back? Okay. We're back after a brief fire recess. We appreciate the Marion City Fire for showing up and walking the building. Madam Superintendent, I don't have a court reporter to roll back what you just said, but find your place wherever you can find it.
I think I was around elementary summer school and high school summer school wrapping up. We had 70 students enrolled in kindergarten camp. And we already have 265 kindergarten students enrolled, which is really great for us. Our enrollment team has done a big push to try to, you know, working with Mary Franklin, you know, we revamped all of that to make sure that families have the information. We've served 66,000 meals so far this summer. And the last thing I have is a couple of grants that we've received since the last board meeting. We did receive the one-time state, I don't know what it is now, community investment fund grant in the amount of $500,000, so I did add that for discussion, so I can share some additional information with that. And then Marsha Pitts led the, a team to write a grant for the Grow Ohio, which we just received this week, $40,000. I believe we have 20 teachers that are signed up to do extra things with agriculture or micro-farm. And the grant will help provide professional development as well as materials for them to use in their classroom. So they'll be able to bring the kids out here for field trips and do like things like hydroponics and things within their own classroom. So we're thankful for that, you know, we, we thrive and. So, we're thankful for that, you know, we thrive off of a lot of grants, so we've been lucky to be the recipient of those. So, that concludes my district update.
Are there still camps happening, or are they all completed?
Yes, I know there's four camps this week, let me make sure I get them right. We have volleyball camp starting Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday here at Harding from eight to ten, and then there's basketball camp from ten to twelve, same days, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. We have cheerleading camp, that's going on in the evening, six to eight P.M., Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday here at Harding. And football camp is, I think it's on Wednesday, is that right Sean? Football camp is Wednesday over at the stadium.
There's an explorer camp for career tech at the high school two days this week, too. We received an email, so it's fifteenth and the seventeenth for kids interested in career technical education all throughout the district. Pretty cool.
Yeah, I think we ran a lot of awesome camps this, this summer. It was definitely a step up in the camp game. Item four is the treasurer's report. This is a motion to approve the board minutes from June third, twelfth, seventeenth, and twentieth.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Ms. Swonger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Four B, the financial approvals, motion to approve the following financial items, the June twenty twenty-four checks, the June twenty twenty-four fund balances, and the June twenty twenty-four financial report. Madam Treasurer, you wanna comment on any of these?
Just the financial report for general fund, we ended up very close to where I thought we would based on the May forecast, we were with less than twenty thousand dollars difference. There were some variances in revenue and expenditures, but it equaled out to about twenty thousand dollars, so. That's, you know, that's, that's really, I mean, I feel good about that, and, you know, I'll be starting to build the forecast for the fall, but I will share as, as things come up, I will share with you any changes or things that I'm seeing, so.
Okay, appreciate that. Do we have a motion to approve those items?
Motion to approve.
Second. Excuse me, second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swonger?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer? Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Item five A, hearing from the public. The Board of Education recognized the value of school governance and public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves in school matters of community interest. Public participation is time set aside for the board to listen to public comments, but is not intended as a time for dialogue. The board offers public participation and members of the public in accordance with the procedures below. I'm not gonna read every one of them to you, but the board applies these procedures to all speakers and does not discriminate based on the identity of speaker, content of speech, or the viewpoint of the speaker. The lone person I have is Ms. Rollins.
Hello, I am speaking tonight as the president of MEA. At the last board meeting, there was a false statement made, and so I am here to make sure that I state the truth, because it's frustrating to have lies told. MEA does not meet with Rocky Ratliff in any capacity, backdoor deals, backdoor meetings. I myself have been president for about seven years of our association, if not eight. I'm sorry, I haven't done the math, I've been involved in MEA as an officer for over a decade. In all of that time, I have never once stepped foot into Rocky Ratliff's office as union president, discussed any MEA matter. As president, I have never asked any member or officer or anybody else to go have a meeting with Mr. Ratliff at or not at his office, ever. I have been to Mr. Ratliff's law office, I believe, once, years ago on a personal matter unrelated to anything with Marion Education Association. I do not appreciate on behalf of my members that we get thrown into the argument in order to discredit someone. I would prefer that as the president of our association, if there are questions or concerns, they are brought directly to me. I will address any concerns, any issues. I have spoke at board meetings multiple times, I, as Jamie Rollins, have zero concerns or issues speaking directly about my concerns with any district activity by following the protocol, speaking at our labor management meetings at both building and district levels. And I just wanted to clear that up, because I was rather insulted that that was thrown out, and our members work really hard for this district. We really want what's best for the community, for the schools, for the well-being, a lot of us have children that attend here. So, I wanted to make sure that the truth was stated and that that false accusation is not thrown out there, and thank you.
I have no other, I guess, speakers for, does anybody else wanna speak tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to item six, the agenda confirmation, any additions, deletions to the agenda as written.
I have an addition.
Yes.
I, and ongoing, would like to add conversation about the lease, especially considering that meetings that I attended with the county commissioner said that they don't comment on pending litigation. I think it's important for the public to hear information as we receive it. I think also, in view, in light of that particular phrasing, I have talked to a couple of individuals who think that we may have to advise the treasurer to look at maybe putting money aside into a cash reserve or whatever to, if that were to come to fruition. So, it's just a conversation, I want to just add that to our general agenda so that we can get updated as the information flips.
So, I'm hearing a motion to add the lease to this agenda?
I'm, yes, I'm asking that we add this particular item to the agenda. I don't know what number it would be.
Okay, do it.
I'll second that. What, probably section seventeen?
Seventeen?
Where we already have discussion items.
Any discussion on adding or not adding? Call the roll, please. Any other, any other, before we call the roll, any other additions or deletions? Okay, can you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swonger?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Six B, approval of the agenda, have a motion to approve with the conversation of lease added.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swonger?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. I see nothing in item seven. Item eight is new business, the twenty twenty-four Marion City Schools Online Day Plan, Madam Superintendent.
This recommendation is based on a requirement that the state of Ohio has for all school districts, that is to have a plan in place in the event that we have to do online days to make up for those calamity days. Each district has to develop their own plan, we also have to have agreement, written agreement by the MEA president. So, we have had conversation, and MEA is fine with this, but we also need to have it board approved by August first.
This is, I guess, gets over all the hurdles that we need to check with MEA signing off and so forth?
Correct.
Okay.
Jamie said she'll sign it today, it's board approved.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just, I remember once, a while ago, we would actually have to miss nineteen, based on hours, we would have to miss nineteen school days in order for this to go in, is it still about the same? I mean, I know every two-hour delay cuts times off, but...
I don't know offhand exactly how many hours, because I think it depends on, there's a different set of hours now for the different grades, do you know how many days?
It's after three days, after three days out of school to make up time on that day.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swonger?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Item eight B is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Marion City Schools Student Handbook, Madam Superintendent.
Every year, as you know, we kinda go through the student handbook, we used a different process this year, so I do want to share the process that we use. In the past, we've had a student handbook committee, and I believe it was voluntary, people can just sign up to be on the committee, and we weren't really sure that that was getting the range of people that we needed to be on the committee, and also, you know, people would say, well, we didn't consider these things with elementary, there were some gaps. So, we've talked to the LMC this year and decided that each BLMC would take those handbooks and kinda talk with their membership, see what things they wanted to bring forward. So, Greg Menzie really was the keeper of kinda updating this. So, we took the feedback that we received from the buildings, Greg has gone through and updated all the policies that we updated this year, there will still be more. So, you'll see there's a note that we'll keep in there by the cellphone policy that says to be updated, but we do, I mean, for the most part, we don't make major changes to the student handbook. It doesn't have to be approved by the board, but it's best practice, because then it gives us the, the skin that we need in the game. So, just wanna make sure we have it in place, and I talked briefly about this earlier, that it will be, you know, in an online electronic format, and they did add to the handbook when it's updated, so we'll be able to make sure that we're looking at the most up-to-date version, because we anticipate that there are going to be several policy changes in state legisla-, state legislation, sometimes federal, as we talk about Title IX. So, we know that we're gonna have to make changes to it throughout the year, but this is part of the enrollment packet, and as we start this beginning of the school year, parents get access to the handbook.
And it's on our, our website, do we have like student handbook and it says updated and the last time it's updated when they have it, or is it, I know we have it like under each section, I think, right?
We can add that so that it will be clear to parents once they click on the link, because if you just put it on here, they won't necessarily know on the website, so we can put a note to add that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Motion to approve. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, we have this Marion City Schools handbook, but do each individual buildings have their own as well, or what?
I don't think they all do, we have discussed them, at least some things that are just unique to their buildings. I know that this one is written heavily for the high school, we've had those discussions, so some of the elementary principals do send like a shorter version that says like, these are the teachers in our building, this is when school gets out. In the past, I don't believe that all of them have done it, but I know that we've talked about having them all just do a short, you know, like a little insert, just like they have to do different staff, they should have a staff handbook that's relevant just to the things in their building.
But nothing that goes against what the district?
Yeah, they can't put stuff that's outside of this.
Okay.
They can, they can share information that's specific to their building, like our, our bus drop-off is on the east side of the building, those types of things our parents might need to know that are specific to their building.
I just don't want there to be confusion, if I have a child at the elementary, the middle school, and the high school, and day one comes home different versions of... Because someone had asked me a question about some policy stuff, and I had to look it up, and I don't want there to be confusion as to what is good for one, but not the other. So, you're saying there won't be those discrepancies if we are very mindful of this particular document?
Yeah, this would trump, this would be the guidance, because this is what is guiding the district, and this is what the board is approving. So, you can't do something outside of this.
I think the way I'm taking what you're explaining is the actual student handbook is general rules for everybody, and there might be a specific building policies dropped, like you're saying, the example was a drop-off that might be for Hays, telling you how to drop off the kid in the looper line, I guess, but the policies are all gonna be the same regardless of what building you're in, the general student policies. But maybe building-specific ones are included, as you're saying, it's kind of like an insert for that building.
Correct.
Correct?
Because they take the verbiage from that student handbook, and if they wanted to create one in their building, they would take that verbiage from the student handbook and put it in within their own building.
Which would have a few building-specific policies.
Like, you know, some of the elementary schools for PBIS, they'll see like Taft Heroes, and it has what their expectations are, like that might be something that's in the school one. But it wouldn't go in the district one, because everybody's not doing Taft Heroes.
Yeah, correct. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swonger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Item eight C, overnight field trip, Harding High School Show Choir, Marengo, Ohio, Madam Superintendent.
This is a trip that the show choir takes, I think, every year, and it's just an overnight trip, so we're just asking for board approval, I've looked over it and there's, we're recommending approval.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Can we call the roll, please?
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Swonger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Item eight D, the overnight trip, Harding High School Girls Soccer Team, Madam Superintendent.
Yes, actually, this one came through today, but I didn't want them to wait, since we had the board meeting tonight. This is an overnight trip, really it's just gonna be here at Harding High School, trying to do some team building with the girls' soccer team. So, they would be spending the night here on August second for one night.
Again, I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Ms. Swonger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Item eight E, approval of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five transportation routes and stops in accordance with the Ohio Administrative Code thirty-three oh one dash eight three dash one three A, Madam Superintendent.
This is actually something that we're, each school district is required to do each year before the start of the school year, is just to approve the transportation routes. So, you have a list of our proposed stops, they haven't really changed as of now, but we do anticipate that we may have to move some stops around. As you remember, last year, when we were trying to work through the Marion Prep and Tri Rivers thing, we had to make some changes. However, approval of this just says that you've seen the routes, you approve what we have, and then it gives the superintendent the authority to make changes as needed. We are starting off the year with the same route system that we did with Marion Prep and Tri Rivers, because that worked, so the morning AM buses, Harding, will pick them up, and then in the PM, we use the grand buses.
So, from what you explain, there's been no differences from the last time we changed this?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. But again, they're doing a few things differently in transportation, we're actually going to see which parents are not gonna ride the bus, because typically in the past, we just say, you have, let's say you have five hundred kids, they're all riding the bus, you all get assigned a stop. But we know all five hundred of those kids are not really riding the bus, because sometimes their parents drop them off, babysitter might drop them off. So, we're gonna be more streamlined this year about who's actually on the bus, so we might be able to, you know, change some routes as we go along, or find out that there's a stop that we really don't, we might not need. But just with the whole bus driver shortage and trying to be useful of efficient routes and using bus driver time wisely, that's one of the things that we're planning on doing for the upcoming school year.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So, what's that distance? What's the distance that students have to be from school in order to participate in writing? Okay.
It's different for high school and elementary.
I think we were at three quarters of a mile, right?
Yeah. The, the state-
It was a quarter and then we moved it to three quarters, I think, last time.
Yeah, the state has a, we're, we're a little bit under what the state requires because of the complexities of our neighborhoods, the railroad tracks. Um, so I, I would have to get that to you because I don't, I think it might be two miles for high school. But I know we're under, we're still under what the state requires us to do.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Uh, item nine, new business agreements slash contracts. Item nine A is Mansfield Psychological Services. Madam Superintendent.
Um, this contract is, um, with Harding High School, Tri Rivers and summer preschool evaluation. So they're gonna be doing psychological evals. As you know, we're short, um, school psychs. So we have to contract services out, um, if we do not have school psychs to do these evaluations.
What? Do I have a motion approved before I go to discussion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, under the discussion, what is, can you tell us what's the difference between A and D? Which is the Achieve Psychological Academic Services?
So I know Achieve is only gonna be working with preschool.
Okay, so that one's just preschool only. This one is not preschool at all?
It's doing summer preschool. I don't know, you wanna comment?
Um, so Mansfield will cover all the high school, um, for this year, but this summer, they're gonna cover like four preschool evaluations. Achieve will start probably towards the end of July because Achieve will do some preschool as well.
When you say four preschool evaluations, what do you mean? When you say four?
They're gonna test four students.
For this summer, right?
Gotcha. So the other one's testing a lot more, but this one is just for, for?
So Mansfield throughout the school year, they'll test probably seventy-ish.
Yeah.
Um, and then just for the summer, Mansfield will prob- maybe test four, even if that many. The Achieve, that through the school year, they're gonna test maybe up to eighty and then through the summer, they may test four.
Okay.
Just depending.
So the, the number of preschool, this is not our main preschool, uh, evaluator, right?
Mansfield will not be, no.
Correct.
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Uh, item, I believe it's nine B, RFS, Behavioral Health Services. Madam Superintendent.
So, um, this is actually our formal agreement with RFS. Um, we actually did end up adding Grant. Um, if you remember, we were going to use Effective School Solutions at Grant, but we're, they're still having, um, trouble staffing that, recruiting, which we figured it might be hard for us to do. So, um, Jen Sheridan and her team have been in touch with RFS and they're willing to, um, partner with us. And so we're going to, we would like to go ahead and add Grant to their contract this year. Um, and what was surprising to me is that we already have twenty-two incoming sixth grade students that were working with RFS. So hopefully that will help with the transition, um, with them already being, working with that agency and families knowing them. So we've already discussed the three elementary schools, but we have added Grant to kind of help us fill, um, that gap that we know we're going to have.
And those twenty, we, they were just at, I believe, Taft, right?
They were at Taft and wasn't GW Garfield, where was it? McKinley and Taft.
Okay.
This year.
So the twenty-two represents from those two schools coming in. Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Do we know if RFS also does preschool evaluations? I don't know off- Okay, got it. We'll leave it at that.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Item, uh, nine C, Ohio Guidestone Behavioral Health Services. Madam Superintendent.
Another behavioral health contract. Ohio Guidestone is, um, an agency that we've worked with for several years. You know, they provide mental health support, um, services to our students and they would, we like to have them continue working in all of our buildings. So this is, um, a renewal agreement.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Uh, nine D, uh, the Achieve Psychological and Academic Services. Uh, Madam Superintendent.
Um, we briefly just talked about this, but this is also for, um, psychological services for testing, but will be specific only to, um, preschool evaluations and play-based assessments.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I'm very happy to see that we are, um, utilizing several different mental health type services to help and be here with our, our kids, especially at that young age. I think that's very important.
Is this, I guess my question is, is this, um, not every preschooler will have this, is that correct?
Correct.
It'd be the ones that we think need a, an assessment. Is that fair?
Yep.
Okay.
Kevin, I should've let you respond. That used to be your job.
And then we're, yeah, Mr. Hayner, I guess you're the one, since you're head of the preschool. But, um, so this would be, uh, this would be getting an evaluation for maybe a student that's showing some behavioral signs that we need to maybe know what's going in, yeah.
And that's part of that play-based process would be, they would come in and help to evaluate that individual.
Okay. Is the evaluation like a one-time thing or is it maybe, okay?
And they'll go into a classroom where it's a play-based, um, now have activities. And then we bring in, um, our professionals, speech, OT, PT, all of them have a role, um, where they'll evaluate that child as well. Um, and then we meet at the very end where we will disseminate that information out to the group.
Okay, so that, so that, they are supplementing with our people, I guess, right? It's not, they're doing everything and then handing us a report.
So this is specific to special ed teaching.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, they will, they will supplement to like our speech therapist, our OT, our PT, but they are going to put their whole report together and then they are gonna be the ones that share the report with parents.
Correct.
Because they're the only people that are licensed.
Yeah, licensed to do it.
Yeah.
And now with this, they're gonna do just preschool on this one?
Yep.
Okay. And we expect, uh, because I saw the price a little bit, but we expect about eighty?
Um, so last year we had eighty, so we're just going off that. I would hope we won't have that many because we're gonna try to put another process in place to try to not have that many, but potentially, yeah.
Okay, so that's just a ballpark. Last year we did eighty, could be seventy, could be ninety.
Yeah, and they're willing, they know, you know, you, you don't know who's moving in or what kind of kids you're gonna get. So they're willing to expand if they need to, but obviously if we don't go all the way of eighty, that would be ideal too.
Okay, and the last thing for me, it, does this happen throughout the year or at the beginning and?
So we'll start, we've been doing play-based assessments all summer and so like we have another one at the end of July. And then, yeah, it'll happen every month up until like next July.
So I'm assuming like when we see something that might say, hey, maybe we need to get this checked out, that's when we call and have the evaluation done.
Yeah, a parent can call anytime.
Okay, or if we see something, we could say, hey, parent, can we, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Is Achieve new to Marion City Schools or did we use them last year?
Yeah, so, uh, it's owned by someone who used to work in Marion City Schools. That's how we knew about, um, she used to be a school psychiatrist. That's kind of how we knew about the connection and they're very good at preschool specifically, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Item ten A, impractical to transport. Madam Superintendent.
Um, we did this last year. We have two students who live in the Marion City School District and per state law, if they attend a non-public school, they can request, um, transportation. Um, we're saying as a district, it's impractical to transport to this school that they're attending, um, due to traffic and distance. I think we have a thirty-minute window that we're allowed to have and once traffic is up, they've, they've run this route before. So we say, no, it's impractical for us to transport. And, um, at the end of the school year, we verify that the students attended the school and, um, they get payment in lieu of transportation.
Is, is that amount that I'm seeing on ten A, is that per student or total?
That's total.
Okay, thank you.
If the state has a, I think it's like eleven hundred or something, sixty-seven per kid.
Yeah, calculation on there, okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Uh, item eleven would be an executive session. I guess we would need to go to executive session regarding employment. Right before the consent agenda. I'll make the motion to go to the executive session regarding employment.
Second.
Can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, uh, items, uh, thirteen, the new business consent calendar, thirteen A consent calendar. Uh, this consent agenda approval, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine. And will be enacted by the board in one motion in the form listed below. We will follow board policy one sixty-five point one, section E, in regards to the consent agenda. The superintendent recommends the approval of all consent agenda items. Employment specifically conditioned on and subject to successful background checks, receipt and final administrative review of all application records and receipt of all other necessary documentation. So we're doing items thirteen-
A through J.
A through J, right?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is second?
Second.
Any further discussion, anything have to be said? Call the roll.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes. Uh, no items were removed from the consent agenda. Obviously, the board announcements, uh, future board meetings are there for your review. Anybody have a committee report?
Yeah. Uh, what are you, are you not able to pull up, um, the notes from the building and grounds? That was a very important meeting. I appreciate you taking me around to see all the great things that are happening in the Mary Ellen Withrow Room and the robotics, uh, lab and the welding. Appreciate that. Appreciate, uh, the beautification of Harding. But, um, do you have the, the notes from the building and grounds? I can't pull it. So I think, um, Mr. Grau mentioned that we are a couple of good things, two million dollars in spend, that's not a good thing, but two million dollars in spending. Um, I think it's important to mention the savings we got as far as the gym floor at Grant is concerned. I'll wait and pull that.
Yep, I got it.
Okay.
Um, we did talk about the Grant gym floor, but the original amount the insurance was gonna reimburse was about seventy-four thousand and, um, we got reimbursed ninety-nine thousand. Um, so there, there was some savings there. And I think we talked about the Grant, which we're going to talk about. Um, I think that was, I think that was it.
Anything else, Ms. Dyer?
I think that's it.
Okay. Anybody else with a committee report?
We'll be discussing the proposed, uh, personal communication device policy later on in the meeting, not too long from here.
And that's from the personnel from tonight, policy and personnel.
Correct.
Okay, yep. Okay, moving on to, uh, item seventeen A. Madam Superintendent, this is the OTSCIF grant.
Yes, um, I just wanted to announce that we did receive notice, I believe it was on July third from the state, that Marion City Schools is a recipient of the One-Time Strategic Community Investment Fund. Um, as you recall, we had, um, put in an application to start the initial phase of the Marion Harding Performing Arts Center. Um, so we do have, uh, that drawing made. And the grant was actually written to offset the costs associated with the initial phase. So we have things such as the pre-design, the schematic design, um, engineering, civil engineering, um, geotechnical testing or evaluation. Um, and then any remaining funds will be used to cover costs associated with earthmoving, foundation and structural build. So, um, the amount that we received was five hundred thousand dollars. Um, we're kind of in limbo right now as the state is setting up accounts. We got an email to make sure that we do have a account to receive the funds. Um, and then they asked that we have a final report, um, upon project completion, no later than June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. But again, um, you know, the total project is gonna be much more than the five hundred thousand. But we wrote the grant, um, specifically for the initial phase. And I think Jolene had collected some information about as far as like financing the additional funding.
Okay. With that being said, when do we have to tell the state, yes, we can move forward? Or no, we're not gonna be able to come up with the additional funding so we back out and you can have your money back, I'm assuming?
Um, that, I'm just think they're assuming they're giving it to us, but I could reach out.
Well, there was a, when I read it, I, I don't have it in front of me, but, um, there was something like, uh, there was another part of, they wanted to do to kind of do more of the application process or whatever.
Oh.
It's like ninety days or something?
Yeah. Once they open up this portal, it says we're also gonna have to fill out for a brief project narrative, address, taxpayer ID. Um, and then they're giving us additional detailed structure, uh, detailed instructions.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm assuming we're gonna have a contact person for it, but they're still setting up like accounts and they just got the award. I think it passed on June twenty-sixth with the House and the Senate. So I'm pretty sure we'll have a contact person for the grant, but I don't know who that person is right now.
Then we, that's the five hundred thousand, so we can then figure out from them, right, what our deadlines are on acceptance or not.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Acceptance of the overall project is what I'm talking, right? And I think you had given that in your update.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think the only funding option you would have is a levy. We do not have the funds to, obviously, just to pay for it.
Correct.
And it, we do have a borrowing option, but it would be general fund repayment and that general, it would be seven hundred fifty to, depending on the size of project, seven hundred fifty thousand to a million dollars a year for thirty years. So that doubles your cost of your project when you borrow it like that. So I don't think, I don't think we can do that to it.
Correct, but it also prolongs payment. We're only coming up with seven fifty to whatever, so if you're looking at thirteen, it's not horrible, I guess. But what your, your recommendation is, if we're going to move forward, to consider a levy. I think we all took that.
Yes, that is, yes.
To be the recommendation.
I don't think, where we're at right now, that taking on that, that additional debt is, will do anything good for our district.
Which is why you proposed the levy option.
The levy, yeah.
And we have renewal, right, coming up in twenty twenty-six?
I believe so, yeah.
Yep.
Which is critical funding too.
So what, Madam Superintendent, what do you think? Obviously, this should be on maybe the next board agenda to do discussion. I mean, what, you know, what do you, what do you think? Where do we go from here? I guess is the better question.
This is gonna cross several of your board committees. A big part of it is gonna be finance, which I think we agreed that was gonna be the main place it would sit. You've got some with, um, building and grounds. And I feel like there was one other committee too across.
Extracurriculars.
Yeah, extracurricular. So, I mean, if this is, this is definitely gonna take collaboration amongst the board. So, I mean, if this is, this is definitely going to take collaboration amongst the board. I mean, I think possibly what you probably need to do is look at, you know, whatever that total cost number is and then what your, what your finance options are to finance it. Which obviously Jolene can help with the numbers, we help with the programming.
Yeah, when's the next finance committee?
Next month, yeah.
Like?
In August, August.
Probably August.
Yeah, sorry, the August regular, yeah. The August.
Right before the August meeting.
Yeah.
Because I mean, in order to make an informed decision, you have to know what your options are to finance the project.
Correct.
You need to know what you, what you're going to have to pay, what your.
And I ha, I do, actually do have a, I, I reached out to our professionals that helped us with our bond refinancing.
Correct.
A few years ago, so I do have a handout if you would like to see it, that kind of just breaks down some numbers for you.
Yeah, if you could.
I'll, I'll get, I'll get that.
We have preliminary figures from the designs and stuff that we consulted with the architect and engineer.
I think it was a 13 million to 15 million.
I think we were talking 12. And then it depends, too, on, I mean, you've got your design phase where you're going to have to get the actual structure together. But when we talk to other people who have the performing arts centers, they say like too, it's about what you're going to put inside of it, like the sound walls, the, the mics, the, I forget what they called it, something on the stage, a flight.
The fly space.
Yeah, the fly space. So those are all things that, that the architecture, the architect doesn't do, but that's where you bring in a team of like the teachers who are actually doing that or the experts with sound and engineering, and they kind of come up with those things that go inside.
So what you're looking at, there are, the first pages, it, the borrowing option where you would repay with general fund, it's, it's called certificates of participation. It would be exactly, you'd have to go through the whole process, just like, and you would, you would actually sell bonds, just the, the repayment options would, is, is from your general fund instead of a levy. So interest rates are higher on that. And then the op, the levy piece comparison is also on there. And that, there's also explanation of the different, the different types. So, yeah, there.
But if we had, if we even wanted to even look at a bond, shouldn't we have some kind of communication from like the auditor? Doesn't the auditor have to?
Oh, yeah, I mean, to even know how much you would need, there has to be a more complete plan.
Right.
We'd have to have more, you know, on cost and all of that, actual, you know, schematics and all that, so you would know. So, you know, right now it's very preliminary. So we, that's why I just told him, give me options for 10 million, 15 million, 20 million, just to kind of give you that rough.
Rough is.
Rough picture as to an estimate, and that's as of right now, you know? As interest, interest rates, you know? I don't know if they're going to hold and eventually go back down, but you know, that right now, interest rates are high, so. Even for this kind of thing.
So 30 years?
I mean.
Yeah, you can go out 30 years. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like buying a house.
Yeah.
About 30 years.
I mean, I think, you know, obviously, we need to either get serious or tell the state we're not going to be able to.
Perhaps you need to get a committee together, a planning type committee that could look at all of this stuff and it's a good job of looking at numbers.
All I had to make, all I had to do is make a phone call. The professionals put all that together.
Yeah, maybe there needs to be.
But they're very good at what they do.
Because that, because I thought you said it was 18 million, I thought for this whole thing, not 13, well, not that five or six.
Well, there's, yeah, I mean, it just depends on what all you, cost of the, when you build, cost of products, cost of labor, all of those things are fluctuating.
Yeah. And high right now.
And I was looking at our poverty numbers, too, but on our title stuff, and it's a big ask to ask community to vote on something of this magnitude. So maybe perhaps a committee should be got together, but after you maybe talk to whomever and get the particulars, you say we're.
Well, I think Jo, Jolene has given you the things for you guys to think about and.
Yeah, because that, there's an explanation there when you have time to read and just a little bit about it, but it's either a bond levy or we're paying it out of our general fund. I mean, that's whether it's, you know, however many years, so that's our option.
If you, if you look at some of these numbers and crunch these numbers and we're looking at, would we not have to, I know Jake and I were talking, and would we have to cut programming, too? Would we have to decide which programs?
Well, I mean, that's, if, if, if there is the decision to move forward out of, and paying for it out of general fund, that will be a consideration at some point. I mean, you saw the forecast, a million dollars a year out of that five-year forecast, and that's not talking about the 25 years after that and the other possible capital projects that are, large capital projects that might need in 20 years, and you might still be paying this one off. So there's lots of, there's lots of considerations there, so.
I think there are lots of considerations, and I don't think this is something that needs to be decided tonight, but I think putting a committee together wouldn't be a bad idea of looking at different things. I think we sometimes need to look at, if we think outside the box and we create, create something, maybe that brings more students in. And if that brings more students in, then our numbers shore up a little bit, too. And if we were to have a drama program, maybe we get more people in because of our drama program. I mean, I, I want to think of things that we can do and things that we can push the limit and try to be the most progressive that we can, instead of always thinking, we, we've got to come back here and these are only the things we can do. I think we've got a lot of amazing people in this district, and I think we can sometimes push the limit, and I'm ready to try to push that limit, but not to the point of, of bankrupting us, we're not going to do that, but we would also have to have the support of the people in Marion. And if we can't get that support, then we say, all right, let's go on to other things. But I don't think we need to decide it tonight.
I think a committee.
And I, I agree with what, where you're heading with that. I don't need, I don't think we go build a performing arts center because we might attract students in. We have a award-winning programs right now with Ms. Rollins and Hartman and all these people in our music department. I think this is a area, the arts here, we do very well in, and it's an area that we have historically underfunded and under, I don't want to say cared about because their niche does care, but I think as a whole, we haven't put into that as we have other things in this district. And I think if kids are going to excel, like I know they can excel, they need the proper facilities and the proper training grounds and all of that. And in the area of music and arts, I don't think we have given them the facilities to excel like they can. And I think what we have to do is when we tell these kids to dream and dream big, well, why are we not providing those opportunities for them if we can? As you had said, not bankrupting us, but I think this is one where we have, the board has taken a step to dream, has gotten an initial investment, and can we make it all happen? That's yet to, but I think you're right, we need to have more, the community's going to support us on this, and I think this is one that might have to go to the ballot box to see if they're going to show up and actually support it with their pocketbooks. I, I kind of think they will, but, you know, I'm kind of optimistic on, on this one. So, so maybe we can put it on the next board agenda, maybe all the committees that Ms. Bellford has talked about, we'll start talking about it and we can come up with some ideas. I'm not against having a committee, I think committee would be great and think about who.
Yeah, you need to engage the community.
Yeah, I think that would be.
That's a definite.
Something where we, each board member can name so many people to be on this committee and move forward, maybe advise and see if we got the, the legs for this to happen, so. Okay, seven, 17. We don't have to approve anything on that, so 17B would be MCS graduation, Madam Superintendent.
Um, yeah, I just thought to be proactive this year, we would bring the, this to the board to decide date, time, location. Again, this is just for discussion. My recommendation is that you all, you know, come to the August board meeting and someone makes a motion or, you know, for when you want graduation to be, just so staff can start planning for that. And I know we've had several things with the Coliseum, and at least with the Coliseum, I'll say you don't have to worry about rain dates, it's in one location, because I know once moving it to the stadium, that was a, a concern, that was with staff, was whether or not we would have to move it or not. So again, I just wanted to throw it out there, but if we put it on the agenda for one of the August, it doesn't even have to be the fifth, but one of the August board meetings, that way someone can make a motion, you guys can make the decision, and then staff can work within those parameters to plan.
Great idea.
Thank you. Item 17C, first reading of the board policy updates, which is, was provided, it's the personal communication devices, any discussion on that?
I'll just give a recap of how we got to this draft. We basically took the Neola recommendation, and as you know, Neola offers several options. So this is our first stab at taking, you know, getting a draft out in front of you. I know that during the policy committee, President Ratliff and Vice President Weibling had brought up some, some questions, so I'll meet with my team, I think, on Wednesday of this week, so we'll kind of go back and look at that to look at making sure that some of the language is consistent throughout, because in some pieces, in some parts of the policy, it does mention things such as advisor coach, and we want to just make sure that it's consistent. But pretty much you'll see in the draft, anywhere there's parentheses, I mean, you see the X, those are things that Neola gives us the option to say, yes, we want to include that, or no, we do not. I know that one of the other concerns that has been brought up when we've talked about this is what happens with students who need to use their phones, such as those with medical concerns or I U P needs, the 504s. And there is provision in here that it, at the discretion of the principal, they can provide special allowances, let's, so, so to speak. So again, this is a first draft, I would just encourage you to kind of read through it, ask questions if you have them. A lot of this stuff is, are things that we have had in our old policy, but they're just kind of more clear. And as I explained in the committee meeting, your policy is just, you know, you're governing of what we work in. So then the administrative guidelines is like what it looks like in practice and what we're doing, and we said it might look different at the elementary school than it does at the high school, because we're talking about different ages of students. We also discussed the yonder pouches, I did bring some of them there if you wanted to see what they look like. We only purchased 150 of them as we did a trial at summer school this year. So if this is something that you're, definitely want to move forward as a board, I know that several school districts are purchasing like for all the middle school or all the high school students, or if you want to do one to piece it out. But I know in my discussion with admin, they're saying, let's set the expectation, and then for those students that it is an issue with, maybe that's what we're using as far as a disciplinary measure, like you can't keep your phone away, you, you're going to be assigned a yonder pouch. The other piece, we discussed about those, is just, you know, what happens if students damage the pouches and coming up with like something that we have similar to like the Chromebooks, if you're damaging a Chromebook this time, if you damage your yonder pouch, blah, 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 blah.
And I know I, because I'm not on policy committee, but I was listening, somewhere on there, and I, it was not highlighted, but the fact that the school is not responsible for personal communication devices, I think that's important to put in there, because I know administrators have spent a lot of time with somebody stole my cell phone or somebody took my earbuds, and I just think it would be important to put in there that the school is not responsible for your personal communication device that you bring in. And then there was also a pol, a spot in there where it said that students during the school day could have use of the phones, and I think that maybe needs to be clarified because there are now phones in every classroom. And so if the child says, well, I got to call my mom, I get to use that phone, and they just run and, and grab a phone, I mean, that could interfere with learning. So something that would given permission, or they can use office phones or some, just a clarification in there, because I don't want that to, to interfere with learning. And then I think we did talk about listening devices in terms of earbuds also being added into that policy.
Or a different, I mean, either way.
Yeah, headphones.
Policy on it, yeah.
Headphones or earbuds.
And since it's the first reading, I imagine this will be kind of a lengthy discussion, so I don't think it necessarily has to happen tonight because it is the first reading. I would like for the board to consider an option B where it reads that students can use personal communication devices before and after school, during their lunch break, in between classes. I just want us to think about, you know, we've talked about consistency in, in different areas tonight. And the logistics involved in terms of being a classroom teacher. We're not the ones that are going to be the ones enforcing this, but the, the staff will be. So if kids can take the phone out and then they got to put it back in, what kind of headaches does that cause? But, so. But discussion for a later date, as far as I'm concerned.
So did we have any, I know this is the wine, a lot of this was a template designed by the House Department of Education and Workforce, but do we, did we have any parent input in any for our tailor-made?
This does not have parent input.
Okay.
This is the Neola presentation, yes, or recommendation.
And the state's policy did not have parent input either.
Except for your local representatives, or state representatives.
Any further discussion on that? Item 17D would be what was Ms. Dyer's motion, I believe this is the proper place for Ms. Dyer, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I already stated that I just want this to be something ongoing until we get some type of clarification as to the district's responsibility, if any, to the 100 executive drive and to identify if any information from Law Director Russell that comes this way. Has, have you, anybody received any information about?
Nope.
So I just think it just needs to be, I had an email today that someone asked me about it, and considering, again, that the words pending litigation, it might not be anything, but I think the treasurer might want to exercise caution as far as those words are concerned, and can we put money aside, or what happens when we?
Money, money, it's okay.
Okay.
It'll be appropriated.
Okay.
Whether we pay it or not, pay anything or not.
Okay.
What if moving forward, we just put this, whether we get information or not?
Until it's resolved.
It's on old business, though, because a lot of times, old business is empty, so why don't we just move?
Until it's resolved.
Yeah, that old business is the least.
Can we wait till we have something concrete? I mean, we can always, we can, we can put it on there and say, old business, but then the question is, has anybody heard? Do we have any information?
Well, even if we say.
If we don't have any information, then we just keep on keeping on until we have information.
But I think there's value in saying we haven't received any information as well.
Me, too, because we've been waiting, Kathy, since January. I know, we have nothing. We can't talk about hypotheticals, I like to talk about facts.
Yeah, but if we don't, somebody emailed me today and they were concerned, like it's somebody in the community.
At this point, we owe nothing.
Right, so we just say that.
That would take 30 seconds, say, we have received no more information. At least we're addressing it and then we can move on.
Correct, but as far as I'm concerned, we have addressed it. We told them we're getting out.
Agreed.
We got out. So the more that you highlight something, you're just basically asking.
Yeah, we got out, but pending litigation, to me, are scary words. And the district.
Litigation's either going to come or not come, depending on the county, but if you keep talking, then you're almost saying, hey, please sue us, because we, we want to talk about it every week.
Right, and I, I don't want to be sued, but I want to be ready in the event that we are sued.
You have multiple legal teams, we have a ton of money, I don't, I don't know how much more ready you could be.
Yeah, I don't know, we have a ton of money.
Well, I mean, we have a $55 million budget, I understand we disagree on how it's spent.
I just asked to add it, I'm not going to argue, I mean, I just want it added, and if we add it, no business, I'm fine with that. I am not trying to get the county to sue us, I just want to know.
I'm, I'm not for adding.